The regular board meeting to order. And start with pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so I'd like to start with board commitments now. Can you get those?
I think so.
Yeah.
To improve our effectiveness, the Hardin County Board of Education commits to keep children first, to listen, to be prepared, to be professional, to demonstrate financial stewardship, to represent the entire district and support district goals, and to support board decisions.
Thank you. Okay, some somber news. At this time, I'd like to have a moment of silence for Michael Lynch, a bus driver who's worked for us for a while, and so join me in the moment of silence. Okay. All right, so first on the agenda then is recognitions.
Yes, sir. So you have a resolution in front of you, Mr. Chairman. We have several students here tonight. We thought we would have a whole, whole bunch, and there are a bunch on your agenda, but as you know, summer drags a lot of people away and puts them in probably some green and maybe some ocean-y places. So, but anyway, we have several students to recognize here this evening, Mr. Chairman, and so if you'll pass that resolution, we'll get started on that.
All right, I need a motion.
So moved.
Second. So I have a motion and a second, and obviously no discussion, so. All those in favor?
Aye.
And opposed?
You're unanimous.
All right.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Seago. So our first student we'd like to bring up, and I know she's here, Serena McNeely. Come on up, Serena. Serena is a member of the Central Hardin High School, class of 2023. She just graduated. She earned a state championship at the Kentucky High School Athletic Association Indoor Track Championships with a personal record of 36 feet, seven and a quarter inches, and she finished second in the high jump with a mark of five feet, two inches. That was in March. Then she earned a state championship at the KHSA track and field championships in the girls' triple jump with a mark of 30 feet, two and a quarter inches. She also finished third at the KHSA track and field championships in the girls' high jump with a mark of five feet, two inches, and fourth in the girls' long jump with a mark of 17 feet, seven and a quarter inches.
Wow. All right. And you have some parents here?
Yeah, mom and see here. Stand up.
Stand up and be recognized. Thank you. We appreciate the involvement.
Yeah, congratulations, Serena. And you're gonna do run track in college or do track in college. Awesome. All right, Ellie Ice. I know Ellie is here. I saw her. Come on up here, sweetheart. So Ellie Ice at the Kentucky Department of Agriculture, she is the state champion in the poster contest. Congratulations, Ellie.
And her parents?
Yeah, mom and dad are here, yes. Mom's a teacher for us at West. Lakewood, sorry.
Yeah.
Yes, on that campus. Yes. All right, sorry about that, Ms. Ice. All right, John Hardin, FFA. Brayden Hall, come on up here. Brayden has, you're familiar with Brayden. He's come to a lot of board meetings. I wish Brayden wasn't graduating because he's a bright light in our district, but we gotta let him fly. And so Brayden, this is his last board meeting. He'll come to be recognized, but Brayden is a state champion in the greenhouse, prepared, public speaking. He's, he earned his state FFA degree. And come on up here, the rest of the chapter, the rest of the FFA officers. Yes, the rest, the rest of the chapter, Mr. Chairman, earned a gold emblem, earned status as gold emblem chapter and the national chapter award finalist, which is the top 2% of FFA programs in the nation. And even though he's not up here, Jeremy Hall is a great leader and he's, he's a part of the reason why these guys are here, so.
Thank you. Any parents involved in that? Please stand for recognition.
Moms and dads.
Come on to Mr. Hall and nub.
Yeah, yeah, come on.
Yeah. All right.
All right.
All right, any Central Hardin FFA folks here? No? Okay, Central Hardin FFA did very, very well at the, at the state conference, and you can read in the resolution how well, well they did. Creekside, are there any Creekside students here? Emerson Buckles has second place award at Beta. Heartland Beta, come on up here, guys. Heartland Beta. Let's give them a hand as they come up, please. Okay, in Heartland Beta, Lucy Malone finished first in performing arts, solo, duo, and trio variety act. The whole Beta Club at Heartland received second place in 2D design. Hadley Heath was the leader there. Lydia McCombs, River Taylor, Zoe Martin, and Gideon Studer were third place in musicology. Lucy Malone and Lydia McCombs, two students, also helped open the national Beta General Session as premier performers. Then Ms. Emily McCombs, who is thrilled to come up. She is the Heartland Elementary Beta Club sponsor, and she was named state Beta sponsor elect for the Commonwealth. Congratulations, Scott. All right, thank you all. Ronnieville, any Ronnieville students here? Come on up here, Ms. Ronnieville. And Ms. Noel Michael, did I pronounce that right? Ms. Noel, she was second in the state in Beta at Quilling. Congratulations.
I know what that is.
Thank you, Noel. Wes Hardin, any Wes Hardin folks here? Come on up here, young lady. So, and your name? Kimberly, no. Yes, Kimberly. Yes, Kimberly. Like, I don't have a Kimberly. Yes, I do. Ms. Kimberly Leon Melkore, she's a national champion in 7th grade Spanish at Beta. Congratulations, young lady. And another student, Ally Dalton, also won a national championship in 6th grade math. Two other students, Zania Porter, second place, 8th grade science, and Taylor Clements, second place in 6th grade social studies. All right, East Hardin Beta. I know there's a bunch of you, not as many as there can be tonight, but there is still a bunch. Come on up, guys. So, Ms. Hazel, just talk about these kids.
Okay. Can I have my list?
Oh, yeah.
You should be reading the awards.
Yes, yeah, just, or talk about them in general.
Okay, so, all right, over here, we have some members of our national runner-up Songfest team and our national runner-up Performing Arts Large Group.
National.
Over here, we have, now you're putting me on the spot of, are my names? I know it's balding.
Well, let's have them say their names.
Okay, good, good.
Everybody just say their name.
Yes, I'll have them say their name and then I'll.
Just put them there. All right, just say your names, Scott.
Madam Spalding.
Say it loud and proud.
Madam Spalding.
Okay.
Great curator.
Important guest.
Aaron Lester Hill.
Crucial to love.
I'm a virgin.
Awesome. Let's give these guys. So, Ms. Hazel, she is too humble to admit, and then of course she has Ms. Baucham. They have a dynamic Beta Club. We've heard so much about what they did for the Beta Club and from the school in Eastern Kentucky, basically paid for them, raised money and paid for them to code a Beta, which they had never done before. And in addition to excelling at Beta, they give of themselves and they, they are true stewards of this community. So thank you, guys. We appreciate you. So they have some students that, that placed well individually, second place in Beta, and then of course we know second place in Songfest and second place in Performing Arts nationally with that great big group. So thank you all.
Thanks.
All right, thank you. Congratulations.
Just saying, John. John, just saying.
Mr. Wright.
Yes, sir.
Be good for the parents of all the Beta students we just, from all the schools, so.
Beta, all Beta, all schools.
All Beta, all Beta.
Stand up.
All Beta parents, all schools.
All right.
We appreciate the community involvement, all of it.
Yes, absolutely. So that's, that's all, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Sutton, I think, has several students he's going to recognize, so don't, don't get your seat.
All right, Ms. Wright, somebody get a little bit bigger so everybody can see. My little laser pointer gonna work here. There, it works. So what we have up here is, is very important and vital to the, to the growth of our district, and it's our teaching and learning pathway, and I want all the kids to hear about this. It's one of the pathways that we are greatly promoting in our high schools, and it's got various courses you can take to complete that pathway, and I want you to get, get a chance to see the numbers we have of students that are thinking about becoming teachers. And we put a lot of emphasis on this last year. You've seen a 22, 23 school year just last year. We had 56 total students that were taking these courses, and then, wow, rank came out of nowhere. That's fast. Next year, we're projected to have 102. And, and very, you can clap for that, that's huge. So now all these kids in this pathway, getting out, getting experience in the classrooms, we are also paying for them to take the practice tests in certain content areas, maybe an area they want to teach someday. So I want you to bring up that next document, the practice testers that passed the praxis. If you can make that a little larger. My eyes are not that good anymore. So these students right here, you don't have to clap for them yet, Cody Cuthern, Central Hardin High School, passed the elementary praxis. Haley Kelly, Central Hardin High School, elementary praxis. Jennifer McNichol, elementary praxis. Brittany Williams, elementary school. Jacob Weiss, high school history praxis. Jeremiah Diaz, high school math praxis. Slay Sloman, middle school science praxis. Maddix Speller, high school math. Jackson Dyer, engineering. Jenna Gray, middle school math. Gage Hobbs, business. Give those guys a big round of applause. Those guys and girls. The practice test is the test they have to take in order to qualify to become a teacher in a certain area. Without passing that test, you're not qualified to become a teacher. So, but then to pass this as a senior in high school is an unbelievable feat, and we always talk about, well, there's low numbers of math and science. Well, we see some kids up here that have the skillset to not just pass a test, but become teachers in our schools. So all of our future educators in Hardin County schools are gonna start getting this shirt. When they complete the pathway, pass the praxis, get them on scholarship to come back and teach here for Hardin County Schools, this is what we're gonna, you know, give them at the board meeting. So I want to call up three students that were able to make it. Six of them are either working or on vacation. So that's part of it. We understand that. It's July, but these students, I want them to come on up. Jacob Weiss, give him a big round of applause. Come on up, Jacob. Future high school history teacher, Hardin County Schools. Tell everybody where you'll be attending school this fall.
All right, so if y'all couldn't tell, NKU is where I'm headed. I'm already in the teaching college there, so I can't wait to come back to the district and become a history teacher at John Hardin.
Future educator.
Jacob, you can stand up there. I'm gonna get all three of y'all at the same time. Jennifer McNichol, come on down. Maddix Speller, the high school math, come on down. Good job. I'm sorry, Max, come on up. I forgot, Jennifer, tell everybody where you're supposed to go to school. Max, tell us where you're going this fall.
I will be going to WKU.
Transylvania University, Jennifer McNichol. All right, can you get those pictures there with their shirts shown? We appreciate it. Jacob, you wanna flip your shirt around there for me? Yeah, we wanna see the back part. Future educator. He's got the enthusiasm already, doesn't he? He's ready. I love it.
Parents?
That's all I got for recognitions on that. I'm sorry.
Do we have parents for those?
Yes, any parents there with those tonight, please stand up. Clap for the parents, got a note for them. Thank you. All right, that's all the recognitions we have, so I understand if some people have to go, that's totally fine, but we do have some STEM presentations here tonight we'd like to do. I guess we'll start off with our elementary school. I think Vine Grove is here tonight. We had over 600 students participate in our summer STEM program, so we want Vine Grove to come up first if they're, is that right? Vine Grove's here? Ms. Patterson, come on up. I'll let you all talk first.
So this is Noah Rozell. He's one of our participants that came. We had probably 38 students that came with 98% attendance all week. They liked what they were making. We focused on simple machines, making some of the automata boxes that Noah's gonna show you. They did use hot glue. It's the first time in 24 years I let a student use a hot glue gun, but they did great. They used pliers and different types of tools. So it was a great time, and Brandy New organized it with a group called Eureka's, focusing on socio-emotional learning with storytelling. So here is Noah. He's prepared his own speech.
Hi, my name is Noah, and I, I attended STEM camp this summer at Vine Grove Elementary. At STEM camp, we used materials that you could find at home, and we made wind-powered cars, lightsabers, and autonomous boxes. There were a lot of trial and error and error achieves, and through the week, sometimes there were more errors than successes, but we had fun along the way. My favorite part of STEM camp was the autonomous boxes. This is the autonomous box I made during the week, and now I'll show you how it works. So inside here, we have cardboard, cardboard peers, which are different sizes. This, this one will spin.
That's awesome.
Nice.
And this one will spin and go up and down.
That's awesome.
Mine's box was Star Wars and talk. There were a bunch of other different, you know, different kinds, but that's basically how it works.
Excellent.
Thank you.
I need to let Mr. Rozell know, Formula 409 is because they had 408 failures, and they stopped at 409 when they finally had a success. So that's where Formula 409 has its name. So did it take you 408 failures?
Took me 500.
Got to sitz a hammer. Good answer. Good job. James C. Alton, I think y'all are here tonight as well.
Hello, I'm Mark Roberts. I'm one of the counselors at James C. Alton Middle School, actually alum from Central Hardin, class of 2000. So, but I've been in the district and I've done a lot of different things. Right now, I'm also the baseball coach at our school, and I've been doing the STEM camps now for about five years. And so this year, we had 40 kids come. I would say we had 100% attendance, but we had a kid miss one day. So, but other than that, they, they came and we were outside for the majority of it. So this year, we wanted to tie in some life science, engineering, and just a lot of different things. I'm gonna let them talk to you about it here in a second, but they gotta use some cool tools. We were using some power saws out there, jackhammer. I mean, we, we kinda, you name it, we used it to build up our baseball field that we have out there with the baseball program. It was donated, that field was donated to our school from Vine Grove Optimists, and so we're trying to get that renovated, and we had a lot of kids come out, and knowing they were gonna be in the heat and working, they came out stoked and pumped every day, and a lot of them didn't want to go home on the bus because they wanted to finish that day's project. So I have up first, Christian Garcett, who's actually my son, that was there, part of the program, and he's gonna talk about some of the things we did.
Okay, so one of the subjects was life science, and what we did for life science is we made some lures, so, and then we heated the jig heads up and put it in, what do you call it? Powder paint. Then the powder paint sticks to it. So, so most people chose brighter colors because fish are more attracted to brighter colors. So then we, once we, everybody done, was done putting the paint on the jig heads, we went fishing with them. Like, some people caught some fish, not everybody, though.
That's why they call it fishing, not catching.
Then we did a velocity unit, and we did the velocity, velocity unit by creating marshmallow shooters, and we, we used, we created the marshmallow shooters out of PVC pipe, and then we used wind velocity to shoot the marshmallows out. And then after we created those, we hydrodip them by putting spray paint and water, and then you just dip it in, and then it makes a cool design.
Cool.
Good job.
And this is, this is Santi Marcioni.
Um, hi. At this year's STEM camp, we learned how to remove shingles from, we learned how to remove shingles and learned how to be careful while throwing away and gathering up all the nails. We also learned how to check the plywood, um, check the plywood for damage and quality. We also learned how to prevent future rot of the plywood. Then we learned how to use power sander, power sanders to strip old paint, so we could put new paint, so it would look better. And then lastly, we were taught to measure twice and cut once.
Yeah, that's good. And then this is Liam Lenz.
During our STEM camp this year, one thing that we did was build batting cages to improve the baseball team's skill. First, we needed to dig the holes for the posts, and we learned that 1/3 of the height of the vertical post should be underground in the concrete to ensure that it didn't fall over. Since our posts needed to be 12 feet above ground, we needed to dig our holes four feet down. Then we put the posts in the ground, and we used the Pythagorean theorem to ensure that they were all at a 90-degree angle, and we used a string and a 4x4 level to make sure all posts were level despite the uneven ground. Finally, once our posts were braced when we needed them, where we needed them, we fixed our concrete mix with water to activate and poured it into the holes to harden.
Anybody else from STEM camp this summer? I don't want to miss anybody that's here. I know those few groups came, so, nobody else?
Mr. Sutton?
Yes, ma'am.
No.
Here we go.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for, thank you for having me today. My name is Gabby Scott, and I'm gonna be talking to you about STEM camp.
I'll start. You promise you'll try me?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. The people at STEM camp encourage students to use their imaginations and creativity.
They ask questions to help us think harder and outside the box.
We did some really fun activities at STEM camp. My favorite activity was amusement park rides.
Our goal was to build rides and get them to move, or get them to move using batteries and circuits.
During the build, there were a few problems, but thanks to the amazing teachers and my teammates, they were able to get everything solved.
Another good thing about STEM camp were the partners. Having teammates is really great. It can be helpful when coming up with ideas and plans for projects.
One final awesome activity we did was the field trip. On the way there, students can talk about what they've learned and what they were excited for. They give students a communication in a positive way.
And get to know each other better. Field trips are also good for learning new things, don't, you don't normally learn in a classroom at school. We can take the things we learned and share it with others. In conclusion, during STEM camp, I had so much fun. I learned a lot of new things and made friends along the way. Thank you, guys, for listening, and I hope STEM camp is an option for more students to come. Thank you.
I want to say that was very brave. Really appreciate that. Thank you.
That's awesome.
And, Julie?
Sir?
I sent you an email right now, so anyway. Yeah, sorry.
Chairman Seago, it goes back to our five-liner outcomes. They're all in written communication. That was great courage right there to stand up and do this. Greatly appreciated. Thank you all for letting us present tonight.
True grit, yes.
All right. Ah, really appreciate that. I, I took my kids to STEM camp quite a few years ago, but they're both doing STEM things now for careers. That's where they're headed, so I'm happy to see that. Good luck with that. All right, so the next item on the agenda is recognition of visitors.
No, you've got department update with.
Oh, wow, sorry. Yeah, yeah, sorry. We need the College View Campus, so.
Come on up, Dr. King. You're the next intestine.
Sorry, Dr. King. I thought, I thought we were kind of done after earlier.
Little machine or?
Yes, he'll be right back.
I think I just learned a new definition for courage.
Yeah, that was, that was really something.
So I appreciate you guys welcoming us and your support of what we do, and I, trust me, we don't use the things that, some of the things that the STEM use, we don't have bandsaws or jackhammers. We limit those as much as possible, but, and honestly, we have a lot of qualified people working with us. It definitely is a team. Behind me, I have part of my administrative team. I have Ms. Eileen Townsend, our school counselor, Mr. Rudy Garcia, the district's transition specialist, and Mr. Darryl Murray. He is our assistant principal. Without these people and all of our staff, we would not be able to do what we, what we need to do every day. So just a little overview, College View is a lot of things. We have the Behavior Health Program, and this is a voluntary program for elementary students who have had traumatic events happen to them. They're cognitively not quite there yet to understand what's happened to them, so they have therapy, individual and group counseling daily to help them navigate that. We have also the Hardin County Schools Behavior Health for students with disabilities that need a little bit more focus and a little bit more attention, so that way we can help get them either on a medical plan or get them capable of having successful interactions with their peers. We have the main College View Campus, which is grades 6 through 12. We have Hardin County High School, which is grades 9 through 12. It's an online program, but they have tutors, both certified and classified, helping them every day. We have the e-school option for students who need a little bit more flexibility. Again, a lot of our students, some of our students have children at home already themselves, and their life has already gotten ahead of them, so we're trying to help them move forward toward their diploma. We have the Hardin County Virtual School, which is a performance-based A5 school, and then also we have the elementary, which is a attendance-based, which they categorize as A8, and we're adding an attendance-based middle school and high school virtual for students who need a little bit more connection every day to make sure they keep moving forward with their credits and with their content. Just the numbers real quick. For the Behavior Health, we had roughly seven students that we trended, or that we worked with this year, and the Hardin County Behavior Health K5, we've had nine. I'm gonna go rather fast because we've had a lot of information today. Our main campus, if you could just take a look at that, the middle school, we have had 356 students come through our doors this year. At Hardin County High School, we've had 190 students, of which 140 received diplomas. That figure does not include the figure that Wes Blair does with the other alternative program. Altogether, we had roughly 180 students have diplomas that would have given up otherwise. We've also had 14 students in our e-school, and that, and again, is in addition to the 60, 80-plus that Mr. Blair has in his alternative e-school program. Through our virtual school, again, this is only the second year that we did, or, yeah, second, second year, we've had 140 at the end of the year. We've serviced 213. These are students that would have been at home. They have anxieties. There's a lot of issues that are preventing them from being in regular attendance classes where there are other students. So we, the district has stood up and said, you know, we have something for you. We're gonna take care of you. We have 213 students there. We had 19 students in the elementary version of that, as that's getting up and running. A total of 232 students were serviced through our virtual school this year. Of that, we had 808 students serviced through the virtual programming at College View, of which 143 were graduates this year.
Wow.
That was us in 2011, 76 total kids. So the needs for this community to have something for students that have been afflicted with trauma, for students who have identity issues because they're going through things that, that have affected them on a traumatic level, a safe environment for them to maneuver and find a way out. Most importantly, the most important thing that we do on a day-to-day basis is to Most importantly, the most important thing that we do on a day-to-day basis is, is we give students hope. Hope that today doesn't have to be like tomorrow, or it doesn't have to be like yesterday, that tomorrow will be better. And through the works of Eileen Townsend, she works every day with the students, uh, Coach Murray, every day, making a, uh, connection with these kids and trying to get them on the right path. Again, our mission is to provide the positive therapeutic learning environment that embraces the differences, because again, we're all different. Sometimes, if you look at that society today, we're not where we want to be now. But seeing these kids here, we're in the right place. Seeing the courage that it took for you to come, makes, gives me hope. Program goals for our students, again, these are the program goals. Uh, we want to develop appropriate behaviors, develop positive alternative strategies of interacting with others, uh, to learn to verbalize feelings in an appropriate manner, to learn how to deal with conflicts in a constructive fashion, to develop appropriate skills, to assist in those development of skills and the support system necessary to address emotional problems, to facilitate positive communication among school personnel, the student, and family members. Again, instilling that this is a team. A lot of times, school has not been a good place for the student and for the parent. So, we're trying to reverse that trend, to make it more welcoming and more positive, and to assist in developing the appropriate skills necessary to, um, have success in academic endeavors and promote, uh, successful transition from school to a college or career. And how we do this, communication transparency, cooperation, what we all want to do and what all of our schools do. It takes everyone working seamlessly together. It's through these combined efforts of all of our staff and support, Mr. Garcia is going to give you just a very quick, I promise, very quick overview of the therapeutic, uh, work that all of the agencies come together to do, but it's that combined effort of everyone working together and combination, the synergy of all that moving together. It begins with the intake, understanding where the student is, understanding what's going on, slowing down enough to hear their voice, hear what's going on with them. It begins with that intake. It continues while the students are enrolled in College View, and then it extends back to their home school. While the students are enrolled in College View, the, the principals come and visit those students because they're still their students, and they have those connections with them. And then when they go back to their home school, the baton is passed. The therapy that they receive here is transferred to the home school through the therapist that's at the home school, so that way we try not to miss anything. It's a perfect, I wish it was, but it's what we're doing to try to address the needs of this community. What do we got next? And if we have a lot of community supports, uh, we have Vivid, which is a group that comes on and works with our female students for empowerment and enlightenment. These are, uh, professional, uh, females that come in and let this, that the, our female students who haven't had much encouragement, who haven't had much mentorship, say, you know what, this is something, I've been where you are, this is what you can experience, this is what you can be. We have Hope, which is for male students. It, it works on leadership and encouragement. Again, we have a lot of men of diversity come into the school and work with our students to let them know, you know what, you can be a leader, you can make a difference, and you do matter. Uh, we have individual counseling, uh, through various agencies. Mr. Garcia is going to go over. We have group counseling. Uh, we have that for our Title Four students. Students that struggle, we all know what BAPs are, right? Anyone not heard of a BAP? Okay. So, they struggle with that now. It's really prevalent, um, prevalent in the community, so we have the Title Four program in College View too, that kind of helps look at options and, and find alternative behaviors to replace that. We have, uh, student orientation seminars. Uh, when they first come to the school, they have to get assessed for learning styles, their reading and math, their personality traits, so we can design a plan specific for them, to help them, and hopefully carry them forward. Uh, we have parents do communication workshops, uh, before and after fall break, before and after spring break, to get the parents together, and it's sponsored by the mental health agencies, to help them, uh, have a neutral place to establish communication. What does that look like? Why do I have to have barriers? Why do I have to have boundaries? It empowers the parents, who often are struggling themselves. Uh, we have Alternative Resource Unit. These are, believe it or not, in the county, sometimes students that require a really additional support, there's nowhere in the county for them to be. No, there's nowhere out there. So, what are we going to do? We going to let them be at home? No. So, the district has got to provide support for them. So, we have a specialized unit for those students who need even more support for the safety for themselves and for safety for other students. We have an intensive behavior unit. These are students, uh, that need extra security due to the threats and physical abuse, uh, because of the trauma that they've experienced that they're wanting to express towards other. So, again, we have a lot of different parts in this, but we're trying to do it so that way everyone's safe, and through the support of the board and Ms. Morgan, we've got the personnel, we've got the, uh, security features on, on, on base now to try to do and accomplish this in a safe manner. All right? And why do we do this? Because of this. Uh, the kids, what we saw here today, you know, we all slip and fall sometimes. Sometimes all of us need a hand, so we're the hand to try to reach out and grab and, uh, get them to a better place. So, right now, and that was very quick, Mr. Garcia is going to give you a quick overview of the therapy programs and the partnerships that we have with the local, uh, agencies.
How you doing?
Every day I hear that.
Um, I just want to say, let's give Dr. King a round of applause for his leadership. I started out with him in twenty-eleven when we, he first took over Brown Street, uh, and one of the things that he sat down with me and said, he said, "I want to change this from being a punitive place to being a therapeutic place." And that's what we've done for the last eleven, twelve years. And that's the piece that I'm, I'm proud of helping him assist with, with College View and Ms. Townsend and, and, uh, Mr. Murray, um, is we bring in different agencies to come and work with students to actually provide that therapy, to provide therapy for the student and for the family if it's needed. Uh, right now, we have Wellfront, and we also have Cumberland, uh, which is Ms. Sutton, is under Ms. Sutton, the Cumberland Therapy. But one of the things that we also bring in from different universities is I supervise interns, and we bring interns not only to train them to be therapists, but we also train them to work with students that have, uh, issues, because we know that behind every behavior is a root. And that's what we work with these students, trying to find the root on what it is. Is it the environment? Is it the social economics? What is causing these students to behave like they're behaving? Uh, and we know that these babies, it's not their fault. A lot of it is just circumstances that they're in, and that's what we try to work in. One of the things that I do like is we started a program, um, under, uh, Ms. Morgan, was before we send a student to College View on the second suspension, I go meet with that school, with the admin and with the parents, and we see what we can do with that student at the school before we send them to College View. And that has been a, a great success. I don't have the numbers yet. It's only been a couple of years that we've been working on it, but it has been successful. Uh, we, uh, if we didn't have that program, we'd probably have over a thousand students that we service, the numbers that you've seen. The other thing is, once we finish with the student and work with them and find out what we, and they've earned a way back to their home school, I transition them back to the home school, and we have another meeting with the admin and with the students, and we say, "Hey, this is the plan that we use at College View to help you be successful." And admin takes a bunch of that stuff and implements it, and we also, the parents get them involved, because I think that's the biggest thing that we have to do, is get parents involved in their kids, especially when it's traumatic or there's something going on. So, that's one of the things that we, we're allowed to do. One of the things with the therapy piece, when I was talking about the interns, we actually had one of my interns from College View, uh, this year, she got hired into Cumberland, so now she's going to be a therapist for the district. So, that's the stuff that we see coming out of College View, to be able to see that, working with the students. And now she knows the students from the, from the district, so she knows what she has to do and how she has to work with the students. The other thing is our drug and alcohol program. As we know, it's getting big. Drug and alcohol just is getting big within our district, not only the district, but within our, our community. Uh, we have these synthetic drugs. One of the things that I always tell people is when we have a, a person die of overdose, it's not overdosing, it's poisoning, because these dealers are putting stuff into those drugs, and that's why we have the Title Four program. People may think it's punitive, but it's not punitive. We're trying to educate these students on why they shouldn't be using the drugs. And we use, uh, Drug-Free World is one of the curriculums we use, and then the other one is the, um, uh, Wellfront has a therapist that provides the Title Four therapy for these students, and they actually have conversations with these students. Uh, we also brought in another agency that came in over the summer that is going to start, uh, have a meeting next week with them. But these are people, adults within our community that have gone through that and are recovering addicts, that are going to talk to our students and discuss what they went through, what went, you know, some of the stuff. Uh, we have one story real quick. They came and talked to some of our students in the summer camp, and the student ran into that person at one of the, at the theater, because they're local, and had another conversation about drug and alcohol and stuff like that in front of the grandfather, who is the, the guardian, and that's just the stuff that, that impacted. And they contacted me and said, "Hey, we had this great discussion, and it's great," you know. So, it does help to bring people in and discuss the backgrounds of, especially people in the community. It's not somebody that's talking out of a video camera or out of a TV or something like that. It's people that are in our community, and that's what we do in College View, and that's why I'm, I'm happy to be, proud to be part of it, because that's what our main focus is, to help these students figure out what the root of the problem is, so we can help them become successful citizens within our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate what you guys do.
Okay. So, sorry, I'm a little rusty at this, having never done it before. Um, I guess I should have explained that, uh, we have two members that are out of vacation, um, including the chairperson, Dawn, and, uh, our, um, so I'm vice chair, Ben Seago, and stumbling my way through. So, let's see. Now, we're up to recognition of visitors. Um, we transitioning all sorts of things this summer, including our forms. So, we just take them in order if they, if they want to go that way? All right. So, uh, first of all, let me say this, I appreciate everyone coming out. We, our, uh, the, the rules that we have is we don't, um, since these things aren't on the agenda, we don't engage during the meeting, but we do take notes, we take this seriously, and we care about what you have to say. So, it matters to us, and we will take it to heart. So, all right, so the first person up is Christine Purnell, and I, the, the field isn't large enough for the last name. Berbridge, there we go.
She doesn't want to speak.
Okay, all right, pass. All right. The next is Rebecca Rawlings.
I'm really just going to speak from my heart. Um, I'm a former Harden County employee. I was a librarian in this district for many years. I was a librarian for twenty-four years total. It has come to my attention that there are some, a group of people who are going to attempt to try to have books banned in schools because of what they consider them to be totally inappropriate. Um, I'm thankful that these parents are aware of what is in the, the school and that they are concerned, as I think a parent should be, for their child. But it is their child they need to be concerned for and not all children. We serve a vast majority of Harden County students. This area alone, up here in, in the Radcliffe area, most of the schools are close to fifty percent minority. There is no library, public library up here is closed. The only library is in Elizabeth Town. So, the only library that these students have access to are their school libraries. But there, some of the things that I have heard is that these books are in our curriculum. No, these are library books. These are books that are chosen by students. They're not forced to read these books. This is what a child goes into the library and chooses. I personally feel this is a decision between the parent and the child of whether or not they can read that book, but it's not between the parent and all children in Harden County schools. I believe in freedom of speech. I believe in freedom of thought, and if we start banning books because they offend us, we're going down a bad road, in my opinion. Really, that's all I have to say, other than there's about a hundred and sixty books that these, this group is wanting to ban from the public school system. And I hope you will consider the fact that for a lot of our students, the only library that they have access to is their school library. And that's all.
Thank you. Okay. Next up, we have Bobby Coleman.
I'm Bobby Coleman, and Rebecca, um, spoke a little bit on this, so I just want to kind of highlight a little bit of this, because I did the open record request for Harden County and Elizabeth Town School Libraries. We do not, let me put this way, we do not want to ban the books. Um, I don't believe in banning, but I do believe in some books do not need to be in a school library. We have public libraries, and we have bookstores, and some of these books should not be in school, period. So, this book, Sold, I was going to read this, um, we do have quite a few children in here, but, so I'll just kind of explain what the book's about, because you guys have the packets and you can read them, and they're very, very bad. Sold is about trafficking children. Thirteen-year-old little girl gets trafficked, sold into prostitution over and over and over, and it is very explicit on what they do with this person and how they do it, and what they do if they do not follow the laws of the sexual forces that they have to intend to do. So, and we, you know, we've got Sounds of Freedom out now, we're trying to bring attention for trafficking, so we've got to really be careful on promoting it. That's one of the books, Crank. So, we have a drug epidemic per Mr. Garcia, you know, it's a big concern. We unfortunately use our tax dollars and put a machine in Vine Grove for drug overdose, but yet we're going to promote a book in our library called Crank, Boy Toy. Boy Toy is a book that is about a twelve-year-old little boy that is molested and raped by his female teacher. That has nothing, that should not be in our libraries. Again, if the parents and the children want to read it, go to the bookstore, go to Amazon, order it. Um, tax dollars should not be paying for these books. Me and Earl and the Dying Girl. This book is very sexual, and these are just four. So, I have a lot more than, there's a lot of books, but I just, right now, I'm just trying to bring it to your attention, and Mr. Wise knew about this, um, and a lot of you guys do, because we do have HB five. If a parent is unhappy with these books, the parent can come and ask the book to either be removed from the school, restricted, so there is laws that legislation just passed. Mr. Callaway was going to come, he did speak at the Elizabeth Town one. We're going to need you guys' help, because, you know, we are on a wrong path already, and I think cleaning this up a little bit might help a little, you know? I definitely, my, all my kids graduate in Central. My granddaughter here goes to New Highland, and she did go to E-Town the first couple of years. So, I definitely don't want her to bring this book home. And one of the books that I read at Elizabeth Town, there was no children, so I kind of read it, I go home and I call, I talk to my son, and you know, and I didn't know this, it was a book that they were, they had to read in Central Harden as students. So, you know, and I was a young mom. So, there's moms that don't know, and you go check out this book, and you don't know until you're already in the middle of it what it contains. There is a website down at the bottom there, BookLooks.org. It's not all in there, but there is some, and they rate books from one to five, and, um, the ones that I gave you are threes, fives, and, um, and a four. So, I would be glad to get in touch with you guys later, if you want to reach out to me. I mean, I ha, I've worked, I got a spreadsheet for Harden County, and I got a spreadsheet for Elizabeth Town on books that maybe we should either keep them out of the hands, because you've got a ninth grader and a twelfth grader, that's a big difference. So, maybe limit who can check these books out, when they could be checked out, and maybe get parental permission to check these books out after explaining what this book's about. And that's about it. Thank you.
The, uh, next, next person to speak is Jessica Hundley.
Thank you. I'm going to read from my notes, because, um, I'm actually reading from, notes from Shelley Hahn, who is a librarian in our district. She was ill and was not able to make it, um, but we have been speaking this week as the library media specialist in our district, so bear with me. Um, hello, my name is Jessica Hundley. I have been an educator for twenty-six years and have had the privilege at some point in my career to be at the elementary, the middle school, and the high school level. I have been a library media specialist for thirteen years. I'm speaking on behalf of Shelley Hahn, another library media specialist within our school district, who couldn't be here this evening, as well as others in our district. I'm not here today to... I have been a library media specialist for 13 years. I'm speaking on behalf of Shelley Hahn, another library media specialist within our school district, who couldn't be here this evening, as well as others in our district. I'm not here today to point fingers or say that those who are in, on a quest to ban books are in the wrong. I totally get it, as well as most of us do. I'm a mom. My whole life centers around protecting my children to the best of my ability. I don't criticize you for wanting to do what you feel is best for your child. I am here, however, to advocate for all students from all backgrounds and all cultures. I'm asking to have a conversation, to open up dialogue concerning the books in question, rather than simply banning them. I'm asking to develop a method of communication between all stakeholders, including the kids. All censorship exists to prevent anyone from challenging current conception, conceptions and existing institutions. All progress is initiated by challenging current conceptions and executed by supplanting existing institutions. Consequently, the first condition of progress is the removal of censorship. Those are the words of George Bernard Shaw. Banning books without discussion isn't going to change the societal issues taking place today. We can't move forward as a society without having hard conversations to get us there. I encourage you to have open discussions with your child about these books and to not take away the representation that they allow a large population of students to have. Let's allow ourselves to engage in a conversation to deepen, deepen our empathy for people from walks of life that don't look, love, speak, or worship like we might be used to. As professionals, we take great pride in ensuring that books we have accessible to students are appropriately determined based on grade level. As educators in the Harden County School District, we are tasked to prepare all students in the area of college and career readiness. We do that to prepare them for real life and to be contributing members of society in our Harden County community. It is also our duty to prepare students to be empathetic, accepting, and to live cohesively with others who may not be like them or think like them. We can, we can do that by providing literature that reflects not only a student's personal experience, but of those around them. Thank you.
Okay. That's the last person for, last visitor that signed up. And I'm told now that we have.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. So Central Harden's FFA.
Great.
So there was a misunderstanding on time. So Bruin?
You're home.
Right. So we're going to.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so Central Harden's FFA. Come on, come on in, guys. So there was a misunderstanding on time. Come on, come on in. So this is Central Harden FFA and we're going to bring them up front and I'm going to read, I'm going to read their names. Some of them obviously aren't here, but Kaylee Thomas was a state officer candidate. Brooklyn Perry is a state champion in the quiz contest. Brooklyn's here, I know. Lilly Hodges, Maddie Miller, Riley Little, and Ashton Lush were second place in Ag issues. Anaya Paris, Sadie Hess, Dallas Dewis, and Camden Thompson were second place in milk quality and products team. Maddie Miller was second place in poultry ag, public speaking. Preston Meredith, Michaela Mosher, Mackenzie Spurrier, McKenna Spalding were third place in food science. Jesse Folkerson, Eli Thompson, Kaylee Thomas, Charles Drew Thomas, Mackenzie Dewis, and Addison Shelders earned state FFA degrees. And the whole CHHS FFA chapter earned a gold rating, which puts them in the top in the state. So, awesome, guys. Sorry about the misunderstanding on time, but we're glad you're here.
Thank you for being here.
All right. Thanks, guys, for being here. Moms and dads, are these folks, I know Ms. Thompson is back there, Ms. Perry is back there. Let's give them a hand as well.
Mr. Wright, did you want to share about the food to table that you got to enjoy Monday night?
Yeah, so Farm to Table, some Central Harden FFA students were there. I think some John Harden FFA students were there. It was a wonderful meal at the Harden County Fair. Farm to Table was, is a, is a, is a great program. All the food that was served at that meal was grown by Harden County producers, whether it be, there was, they served fish, chicken, and then probably one of the best home-cooked meals that I've had since my mom kicked me out of the house. So, she had to kick me out of the house. I just left to go to college. But anyway, it was, it was a wonderful meal and those folks helped, helped serve it. So thank you, FFA students. FFA.
Thank you.
FFA is a remarkable program. It teaches so much about leadership and so much more than Ag. It teaches leadership in so many different ways. So thank you, Ms. Thompson. Mr. Hall, thank you.
Thank you. So, construction updates.
I don't think anyone's here. Forgot we didn't have the noon meeting, so just have a few things to report on. If you've been by Central, you'll see that the new square footage continues to grow toward the 90s part of the building. We are not quite where we'd like to be, in all honesty, at Central. The bus parking lot is going in today. If you've been by there, you'll see some asphalt that's gone down, so excited to see that. So we do anticipate that our students will be able to come in, the new entryway on the Taco Bell side of the facility. But it's not all going to be bright and shiny right as they get there on August night. The lobby area still has some work to go. We do anticipate that they'll be able to walk through that area, but the flooring mainly is not going to be quite where we'd like it to be. So no worries, that's a two-story building, so they'll go in the bottom for part of the time of the month of August and then they'll transition to the top. So they'll get to experience it kind of as it's finishing up. The auxiliary gym looks good. The floor's in. So the high school actually have the new auxiliary gym and the, the old auxiliary gym for a period of time, so I'm sure they're excited about that. We did have a little hiccup with the big gym floor. We're going to have to do some more work on that than we anticipated. More to come on that hopefully next week, but we, we may not be able to use the existing gym floor right when school starts. So again, a little bit of a hiccup. Also, in the front, the front parking is a little bit behind. So again, that won't quite be ready when school starts back, but we do hope certainly before fall break that the front parking lot will be in and staff and students will be able to utilize it. So there may be a little bit of a park, parking tightness at the start of school, fortunately. We don't have as many drivers in August as we do in May, so that will help. But a few of our staff members may get some extra points on their phone for some additional steps as they make their way to the school. So we wanted to help them meet their health goals as well.
That's kind of you.
Yeah. It's always a positive, right? But other than that, we do feel like the project's going well. Excited. Folks will start to see the, the new cafeteria take shape, the new kitchen, as well as the office areas. That'll be coming along this spring. And we are still told, we hope, that a lot of the project, the bulk of it substantial completion will hopefully be ready to go May 1st. So that's what we know on Central. If you're an Eagle down in Woodland, if you've been by the school, you may wonder what is going on down there. But they're getting a new HVAC system or have been this summer. And we're in pretty good shape there. We're a little bit behind where we'd like to be, but we're told that they're going to get a lot of work made up this week. So we have new lighting, new HVAC system. So I think some of the admin staff is amazed. It seems like magic today with lighting. As you walk, the lights will come on and as you leave, the lights go off. So it's quite fancy. You can dim part of the room, you can brighten part of the room. So I don't know if they're messing with their kids when school gets back, but they, maybe they, they've earned that. But we're excited about it. It's, it's gone well. That's a GEO field that was installed on the back of the school, so it'll be super energy efficient, really good use of funds there, and hopefully have a better climate, better makeup air. One of the things we learned from COVID, that it's very important to get outside air in the building. And so hopefully overall, they'll really enjoy the new lighting and, and a better HVAC system at Woodland. If you haven't been by John Harden, I know John Harden Ag was here tonight. I hope they're excited. We have concrete, a new pad for the new greenhouse that's coming up the hill. It'll be much more user-friendly, more modern, so we're hoping that those kiddos will enjoy that. It won't quite be ready when school starts. The greenhouse itself, the materials arrive next week and it'll probably take through the month of August to get it finalized, up and running and going, but super excited for, for that bunch. But I've been told that Jeremy's got a lot for them to do in August, so probably won't even miss it. And also at John, you may have noticed, if you've been by the school, the new turf field has been installed. It looks great. You know, anytime you see those on paper, it just never does it justice until you actually walk out and take a look. But super excited about that project. Did have a little bit of hiccup and some unsuitable soil, unfortunately, in the endzone area that's going to have to be remediated. The good news is it should be ready for soccer, football, so it really shouldn't interrupt play. It just may take a little while for us to get that endzone area cleaned up. And if you've been out to North Harden, you'll see that that turf project's a little bit behind John's, but again, that was by design. But they've torn the football grass up. If you're a grass person, sorry, it's gone. It's down to mud. The curb has been put in and the turf should follow shortly. So we do anticipate that we should be able to use that field for soccer and football the majority of this season. So that, that one is going well also. Those are the projects I think that you know about. There's been a lot of other minor projects going on, a few library renovations at New Highland Elementary, got some new furniture, Creekside.
Creekside, I saw that one.
So a lot of other little things going on in the district, but those are, those are the main ones. Any, any questions?
Wow. That's a lot.
Will we be doing a video for the parents so they know where their students will need to park?
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Isaacs, I think, is on top of that. I know he'll work with John Wright, but we just, again, we've been asking for forgiveness and patience the last couple of years and we will continue to do so at Central. Just, again, caution parents, we're getting close. Be a good time for me just to mention, please be very patient. I know we've got young student drivers and, and folks I know that got to get to work, but I plan a little extra few minutes, five, 10 minutes, when you're coming into Central. It'll be, I think the student drop-off will be very similar to last year, so that really shouldn't be an issue, but getting in and out of Central for that first month is certainly going to be a little tight. So we just, we'd ask for some patience and some caution as you're going, going in and out of there. That's a good, good point.
Thank you.
All right. That's it. Thanks. Okay. So next on the agenda is consideration of the consent agenda. If you guys look through this, is there anything you'd like to take out or specifically address?
No, I reviewed it. I don't have any comments.
Okay. All right. To get into the record, under Instructional Services, approval of district assurances for federal year 2024. Approval of the HCECTV contracts for production services for the Elizabeth Town City Council, Radcliffe City Council, and Harden County Fiscal Court from July 2023 to July 2024. Approval of modified schedules for students with a disability. Under Student Services, receive the Student Services year-end report for the 2022-2023 school year. Receive the Student Accident and Illness Report for 2022-2023. Approval of the signing of the Memorandum of Agreement between Kentucky Educational Collaborative for State Agency Children, KEC SAC, and the Harden County Board of Education for the Funding of Educational Services at Harden County Day Treatment and Lincoln Trail Hospital. Approval of the additional revisions for the 2023-2024 Student Code of Conduct. Under Financial Services, receive the monthly financial reports. Approval of the Orders of the Treasurer. Receive the School Activity Fund Balance Report. Approval of Change Order 69 through 78 for Phase 1 of the Central Harden High School renovation project. Approval of Change Order 1 through 3 for John Harden High School turf project. That's the couple of things that John was just talking about. Approval of the $2,000 donation to the Harden County Schools Homeless Stability Program for the Blue Oval SK Ford Fund. I guess that's probably from, but. Approval of the $2,500 donation to the North Harden High School Youth Service Center from HPS LLC. Under Human Resources, there's a list of certified personnel actions and a list of classified personnel actions. Miscellaneous items, receive the school SBDM minutes, receive the PAC information, and approval of the minutes from the June 15, 2023 regular lunch board, lunch, school board meeting. Approval of the minutes from June 15, 2023 regular evening board meeting. Approval of the minutes from July 12, 2023 Board Retreat Special Meeting. And approval of the local revisions to policy 09.227 Child Abuse. And that is it. So I need a motion?
I'll move that we approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? All right. Motion carries. All right. So action items. I don't believe there are any. All right. All right. Under New Business. All right. So we have approval of the signing of the inter-agency agreement between the Department of Juvenile Justice and the Harden County Board of Education, acting for Harden County Day Treatment with the exception of Item 1L of the contract. And I presume I need.
A motion.
A motion for that.
So moved.
Second.
All right. I doubt we're going to discuss it since each of you said something and I'm kind of, oh, so, all right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. We're up to superintendent's report.
Awesome. I realize that we have many parents, grandparents, guardians who watch the television program. And so we've had individuals speaking here tonight, but I want to make sure that the parents and guardians that we have who watch or who have students in Harden County schools know of a system that we have to where any concerned parent, guardian can come to a school and let the school know of any books that they do not want their children to have access to. And what happens with that is when a student goes up and tries or attempts to check out that book, that book is flagged and it's based on the criteria that the parent sets. And this has been used for years. We, actually, it probably started due to different religious beliefs and parents not wanting their children having access to certain types of books. This also is used within eBooks that students would have access from our media center as well, that not the actual physical book that students can check out. So parents, if you do have concerns, I know there is legislation, but also you can communicate with your schools. And I want to stress the importance of communication as we begin this new school year. It is essential that we have parents to communicate with us, not only about books, but also where your children are going to be delivered the first day of school. That is really important. If you've changed an address, we need you to let us know that. We also have open enrollment. Part of that open enrollment has a free and reduced lunch application. And it's a little misleading. Every student in Harden County has access to a free breakfast and free lunch. However, if we don't have individuals filling out this form, that causes us to have a reduction in finances that go to our family resource centers, and it also reduces the amount of Title I's funds that we get from the federal government. So I just ask, as you're doing that open enrollment, even if your students were here last year, that is something you have to do each year. So I just ask that you take maybe five minutes to go in, make sure all the phone numbers we have are accurate, and then also to fill out that free and reduced lunch form because it does make a significant impact on our district and the funding that we receive. So again, regarding the books, please know you can go to the schools, share with the administrator or the library media specialist of the books that you don't want your children to have access to, and we will definitely take that parent request and put that in the computer so that we can follow your request. So again, ask you to communicate. I want to reemphasize what Mr. Stith says. We will begin school August 9th before our next board meeting. It takes a great deal of patience. We will have buses back out on the roads. Just ask that maybe try to avoid the front of schools, if you don't have children, between the time of 6:50 and about 7:30 for elementary schools and about 7:30 to 8:15 for middle schools. And then the high schools, I would just avoid.
Stay away.
From about 7:30 to 9:30 with student drivers, many of them driving maybe for the first time on their own. So again, just a lot of patience and be careful of our students loading and unloading buses just to make sure they stay safe. So thank you.
All right. Thank you. So I'm pretty sure we don't need an executive session today since.
Mr. Stith, do we need an executive session to discuss land acquisition?
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Well, we're not going to take any action on that, but if this is for information, okay. So then when we come back to reconvene, it'll just be to close the meeting publicly. So. So, so I'm going to go through the board calendar very quickly right now. August 9, first day of school for students. August 17, 11:30 a.m., regular lunch board meeting. 6 p.m., regular evening meeting here at the central office. So that's all I, I'll probably say it again when I come back, but it might be an empty room then. Well, you have something?
One more PSA, sorry.
All right, we got another one.
Should've got this earlier. But to add to Ms. Morgan, just a quick reminder to folks to don't forget about stop arms on school buses.
Yeah, that's important.
As we get buses back on the road, you see that stop arm on a double road there, divided road, please be sure and stop. Creates an unsafe situation for students and, and the driver of the vehicle. So just ask that you make a point. I know we're all busy in the world, and Lord knows I forget my phone everywhere, but don't, don't drive, don't go past that stop arm. And if you could just remind your spouse, remind your neighbor, just want to make sure everybody gets to and from school every day in a safe manner. So, thank you.
And our elementary schools, with the exception of Lakewood Elementary, will release one hour early, and we will do, send a message to all of our families, letting them know that. But our elementary schools will release one hour early with the exception of Lakewood, and that is because they're on the same bus schedule as West Hardin. And so just keep that in mind, parents.
And Mr. Plan, you wanted to say something?
I just wanted to make a comment, and I should've said it when, after John's report about construction. I live in Sicilia. I drive by Central Hardin every day. And as someone who's watched that project daily from the day they turned the first scoop of dirt, if you go by there daily, you can see what a massive project it actually is. And when it's done, in reality, we will have an entirely new school there. I want to commend the students, the teachers, and Mr. Isaacs and his staff, everybody that's connected in any way to Central Hardin, the bus drivers, because they have had to deal with a tremendous upheaval of their school lives for the past couple of years, and it's going to be that way for probably another couple of years. This is a massive project. But they have done a wonderful job of adapting, at least as far as we can tell. I know some privately have not been happy, perhaps at times. Students have had to walk a little further from the buses to their, to get into the school. And the teachers and administrators have had to make a lot of adjustments. But they have made it possible for that school, the construction schedule, to go as reasonably on schedule as is possible, with the exception of the weather. And so I want to commend everyone that's involved at Central Hardin with helping to make this project work. It's tough to build a whole new school while you're conducting school in the construction zone, but that's essentially what we're doing. It's not easy, but they are helping to make it work, and I want to commend them for it publicly.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so, let's see. So do we need a motion for executive session?
Okay, I'm making a motion tonight. I'll move that we go into executive session for the purpose of acquisition of real estate.
One second.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.